Please.
For prayer and remain standing for the pending leaving.
Praise God, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for your many, many blessings in life. And heavenly Father, we ask that you'll be with all of our employees, put your hand of guidance and protection over them. Be with our first responders, or in our county firefighters and all of them, Lord, we just ask you to protect them as they go out, serve the community. Now heavenly Father, we ask for your knowledge and wisdom this evening in making decisions. We ask this in Jesus's name and we give you the glory.
Amen.
So their flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is founded, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, first order of business, oh, follow me into order. And the first order of business is to proclaim this September seventeenth to twenty-third of the proclamation, proclamation constitution week. So we have five, there's four of you. Five, five young ladies that are here.
From the Highlands of the Potomac Chapter, V A R.
Right. So if you would want us. Do you have the proclamation you'd like me to read?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's do that, and then we'll get over here and we'll have a picture taken. That's okay. I have a copy of it if you.
We want you to sign our copy.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
I just gotta read it up.
Okay, this is proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commence the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September the seventeenth to the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, we, the Middle County Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim week of September the seventeenth to the twenty-third as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. And witness of, I appear into set my hand and cause a seal, Middle County Commission to be affixed tenth September of the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four. And then I will sign this. So if yous would like to come up.
And we'll have an emotion on that.
Yes, we need.
I'm moving that we accept that we, uh, it's said and I give permission to serve and to sign.
For the proclamation.
For the. Now second.
September the seventeenth. Now second. Perfect. If yous want to pop here.
Want to sign.
Sure. Let the Commissioners get in the bag. The new ladies can be in the front. So.
We need a.
Professional there first.
I was gonna bring that. We'll bring it to you.
Yeah, this.
How's this?
This good? Really doesn't matter if we're in the picture, just. I'll cut you off here.
Cause where I was standing and could, you can only see about half of that space. Out of three, one, two, smile.
It's good.
One more, one more, hold that pose. How many more?
One more.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's our privilege, yes.
Like, like, one more, they said I cut you out, that's.
He's the tallest. Just a cop.
There you go. You girl. Hey, we didn't take what was the seal on it, but they'll bring it back.
Handheld smaller one. We can leave it. Yeah. I'm interested. Is it okay if we stay?
Anybody's.
Do you wanna run that up tomorrow then?
Well, you could just take it.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh yeah, well, there's your mom.
Okay. And now she just wanted to be ready for when you come out.
I'm gonna be part of that. Say bye.
If you don't mind, we're gonna change our agenda around a little bit as far as scheduling. And, uh, they bone this here with an issue concerning the development they live in about road signage and related things. So if you want to go up and talk down.
Yeah.
No, I, um, I was here.
Go ahead.
I was here first week of July, and then last spring, I actually talked to Luke about that after meeting here. And there's been those signs, you know, on the corner where I live, which is Peachtree Lane and Linwood. And then the block behind me too, they've not had a sign probably in two years.
There's a sign there, it, you don't want, you going at Linwood?
Yeah.
And you go up and circle around.
Right.
Where does Linwood stop and Peachtree?
Right on that corner. That's why you need a sign there.
There is a sign on our system in wood.
No, it's up on the other end.
There's a, there's a sign where you make the turn says Linwood.
Yes, it says Linwood, but it doesn't say Peachtree Lane. If you're a layman coming down that road there, Roger.
Yeah.
It looks like that's called Linwood. It looks like it's called Linwood, and that's why you're asking me where does Peachtree start?
Go into the other side.
Are you defending Luke, or are you screwing with me? But now I'm getting upset.
Well, now what, you wait one minute, you wait one minute. Now I'm gonna share something with you. First of all, that's not, first, I'm concerned, that's not addressing, uh, fault because anybody that would put two names on a road that's less than three tenths of a mile, something's wrong.
There was one on there when they first put the nine one one up there. What's that?
Why are they two names on that road?
You'd have to ask the people at the nine one one center. That's a great question.
Jeanette was gonna.
That's a great question.
So, yeah, so let me, let me address, um, what you're saying, nothing has been done, but something has been done. I have an email here, a process of, uh, a thing of emails that has went out that actually started on July nineteenth that came from Luke, and it went to all the Commissioners and also went to Jeanette.
July nineteenth is a good two and a half months after I first talked to him.
I need you to let me finish and be quiet, please. Okay? July nineteenth, it went out, when he sent out an email, and he spoke to, he said Jeanette just went and did signs and went into Crestwood to look at Mr. Bowden's concern. She said that there is one place that could potentially be confusing where the road changes from Linwood to Peachtree, and she's going to put a sign there. Other than that, she has said everything looks fine. I am thinking that is where his concern was. So there was this thing of emails that went through and just like I was asking questions back and forth. Basically saying, I figured it was where the streets had changed in that turn, and that was the issue. So honestly, when I saw that you was on the agenda for this week, I emailed Luke, who actually is on vacation, he never responded, but Jeanette did. And Jeanette responded with, um, and I asked where, where we were with this, basically what I was asking. Uh, I sent out and said, uh, looks like Mr. Bowden is on the agenda again for next Tuesday. Uh, and Lauren said that Mr. Bowden said that it's been two months and nothing been done. So something has been done, not.
There's no sign there.
Let me finish. Not physically that you can see, but nothing has been done there. So, uh, so Jeanette responded with, um, good morning, all, she responded to my email, good morning, I will start Sunday after church. And I replied with, I don't expect you to jump on her right away, I don't expect you to go out there on a Sunday and do it on your day off. That's not, that's, it's not important enough that it needs to be done on a Sunday on a day off or anything like that. And me and her, there was some other emails, and I talked with her. And what they do is whenever they get enough signs, and it's about every three to four months, she gets with Jimmy from Parks and Rec, and Jimmy goes out with her and puts the signs together. Now, if you look at the pre, the first email that I said, they just did signs at that point. So it is in the process, you just need to give it some time to, to make it efficient, that Jimmy gets utilized uh, on an hourly basis, because he gets paid an hourly, and he's here Monday through Friday in Parks and Rec. And to make it efficient that when they go out, they do, they spend the day and do a bunch of different signs. So if you can just be patient, be a little bit more patient, we'll get it taken care of.
Okay, here, here's where my patience is. I talked to Luke after a meeting, cause I thought he could just get it handled without it coming down to this. He goes, oh, I know exactly what you're talking about. I ride my four wheeler with my kids past there all the time. And he.
Who? He does?
Luke.
He doesn't have a four wheeler?
Side by side.
He doesn't have a.
Well, that's not what he told me.
When he rides a seven, said, you know where he rides it at?
He told me he comes right past there.
You know where he rides it at?
I'm telling you what he told me and I have standing there. He told me, Roger, right there, that he rides past her with his grandkids. I've seen your grandkids come past there. So what did? So he said, he agreed with me. There's not been a sign there for two years, Dutch. And he was aware of it, cause he drives past of it. And I will suggest to you, he's the guy that was, because the political winds were changing, he's worried about his job and wants job protection. If he was an elected official, I'd have had a sign on that corner without having to ask for it.
Where do you want the sign?
I want it right there, where it belongs, where the previous one was.
Where?
Right where it was before.
Right beside of what?
It's right, it would, before it was right on top of the Linwood sign.
Over top of Linwood.
Yeah, it, it could be anywhere on there. Before, the one at top of the road has arrows, one that says, and, and you're right, I don't know why the hell they did what they did up there. At the top of the road, it says apple tree, and there's an arrow pointing that way for apple tree. And there's another one at the other end of the plane that says Peachtree pointing down, but there's nothing down there. It is a huge problem on the weekends with the post office, and I'm not, I'm not the only one who lives outside the city limits who gets different mail carriers on the weekend. Our mail goes everywhere, our packages go everywhere.
So you wanna sign, uh, so I can get this right, down in the curve?
Yes, that's what it was before.
Right beside of Linwood.
But it was the one that says Peachtree. Yes, one that says Peachtree.
That's really gonna confuse people when they see both of them.
We had it before.
Like to do up there.
Yeah. That's what was there before, but since that sign's not been there. It wasn't removed. It blows away, cause the last time, one time I put it up myself, it, it's, it's very flimsy how they mounted it, cause they're like a fiberglass, they're not metal. They, and it had some pins where you, you put the screws in it, and it flops when it gets windy. Once them leaves fall up the tree up around Hooker Hollow, that wind whistles through there. So when they put that on, they're, they're gonna have to make sure it's fast and good.
Yeah, the reason they went to fiberglass instead of the metals, people were stealing the metals for scrap.
And I understand that, but you gotta, but you could put that sign like it is, it's, it's mounted differently at the other end of the plan. So if they just gotta watch how they do it, but we've not had it there. I just talked to some neighbors and that they're in, and they're missing a sign down where it's Applewood and whatever they named the place where Jeremy Shoemaker lives back there. They're not had a sign there either in a long time. I mean, it's a very real problem. I mean, not only is it a problem with the FedEx people, the mail people, when they're delivering packages, but it's a nine one one thing. So some, some, a younger person, first responder comes up there, and they come down that way, which most people do, if you're coming up from the cutoff road. You don't know what road you're on. You really don't, unless you, you're familiar with Crestwood.
Well, I'm not familiar with Crestwood, but I could figure out which road I was on pretty easily, but, um, but anyway, it's, it's in the process. There is stuff being done. I have proof here that stuff is being done, and it's being worked on.
But I'm, I'm telling you, I dressed it with him. It, it, without him being an agenda item, and he told me he drives past it all the time.
I, I don't know.
He might drive, he probably.
With his kids. No, he said he, he goes past her with his kids in a side by side. That's what he told me.
Yeah, Rod, Roger grew up and looked at it not too long ago to, to try to determine.
Yeah, that room is less than three tenths of a mile. Those streets.
Yeah, but you know how often people chase packages up there? Well, because the, especially the FedEx people, they will just drop them, they'll make so many loops through there. I just had a thing for a brand new cell phone come up there. Instead of putting it in my mailbox, I got something that said they couldn't find the house. I, you wanna see it? I'll show it to you. It just happened to me three days ago.
Cause FedEx can't find my house, and I got a big number on the side of my house.
Exactly, so.
I know exactly where I live.
And, and I know what they're doing. They're coming down that way, and if you shoot out the other end, you don't see the sign. You don't.
Think, think how complicated this is for people visiting Times Farm or Stony Run or Double Cribs and Pearl Hollow.
Right.
There is no, there is no signs that tells you what road you're on after you enter them.
Give us a little bit more time and I'll be fixed.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, we need to preview the agenda.
Under new business, uh, the assessor had the part come higher that was already approved, but she had the name. Um, and then I just listed for the next meeting, we did get the check for the fire and prosecuting attorneys on that for next agenda.
Okay. All right, um. We're with the minutes.
Oh, I'll make a move.
I'll second.
I approve it also. Minutes of the previous meeting, and then we're gonna hold off council payable exoneration of the states until after the meeting. That's okay with you?
Dave, do you like the way that you can come out on the road up there when you've got the peach drive and out on Hooker Hollow now?
What do you mean?
Where that bush was.
Oh yeah, that's much better there.
It's a lot better.
Yes, you know. I mean, it's amazing there's not been a wreck.
Uh, it, it was pretty blind. Pretty blind.
Oh, okay, so you went for. A number, okay. That's what, yeah. That's why it's on number four, okay. So, yeah, I'm ready.
Thank you.
Or I'm sorry, the minutes. A second. I approve it also. Okay, um, going to the correspondence. Uh, dear County Commissioners, this letter is to inform you that I will no longer be the West Virginia Extension Agent, starting September the third, two thousand twenty-four. Although I truly love my work in serving the agricultural community, I will be taking a position that better benefits my family's schedule. Bart Milton Burger will be taking my place as county program coordinator in our office and will be handling day-to-day affairs. It has been an honor to work with you, and I know I'll be seeing you in the community. Please reach out to me if you can. If I can be of any assistance to you, select your phone number. And that is signed Stacy Huppler, West Virginia Extension Agricultural Agent. I hate to lose her.
Yeah.
Okay, and we received a, I just call it regional jail bill. Obvious bills, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. For you, those of you who are not familiar, um, county commission pays for incarceration of anyone arrested in Middle County, regardless if they're arrested by Sheriff's Department, City Police, County State, uh, Police, Richly, State Police, we pay, uh, for this incarceration. Forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents a day for, for inmate.
How much was that, Jerry? How much was it?
Twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Which now, I know that's a lot of money, but we're actually happy with that number, because there has been times past, it's been seventy thousand, eighty thousand dollars a month. So whatever we're doing, it seems to be working for the time period. We start way too many people in jail, way too many people commit crimes.
We also had two credits and one debit.
Right. Okay, and we received a report uh, from our dog wardens. She picked up seven dogs, fifteen cats. They would get rid of them. I mean, uh, they would give, sold, sold them or gave them away. And from what I understand, we're gonna be labeled as a no kill shelter here sometime soon, I believe. We're gonna get that designation, even though once in a while we do have to euthanize an animal that's, you know, has issues or something, but we do it rarely. Most of the times, she, uh, advocates them, say to get rid of the animal. And we see the, uh, correspondence from the assessor of two thousand twenty-four monthly reports, which lists the number of dog tags sold, those, um, dog taxes, coyote management. I'm still taxes collected from the municipalities. We also received a notice, class one permit modification from Alliance Tech Operation Dog Gaming List. They always notify us when they, uh, are applying for D E P that really not a lot the commission can do, but they just notify us that, uh, they're gonna be dealing with the well, their water. Doesn't affect the, uh, doesn't affect the citizens of the county at all. Okay. Old Business Board's appointments. I don't think we have any board's appointments to, uh, this, and I don't think we have any updates on the courthouse improvements either. He had sent me some information, but I think it was all.
Should have, you have the resolution of the region eight, that's the new agenda.
It's not in here that I've seen.
No, I don't have it, so I was hoping you'd like to hear.
Yes, I do. I do, you go.
The only thing with that, uh, law enforcement, uh, ceremonies coming up, I'll, we have one more meeting for that.
Right.
It's all there working on the landscape.
Yeah. No, they did, that was, uh, it was changed, that was changed. Yeah, I wanted the grass.
At least on that side, I didn't know you.
I wanted the grass, but I was overruled. Yes, the, uh, the, uh, law enforcement building will be dedicated September twenty-seventh. Everyone will fight. Uh, I don't have an update on the, the bike charter either, we're still waiting on. Some funding opportunities. We've talked, reached out to our senators concerning the tunnel and partner deal, which we need to acquire before we can do our bike deal. So that's where we're sitting. The tunnel carpet deal is not passable now, needs some major work. Twenty-one million dollars, maybe a little more. So we're trying to get some federal funding to, to rebuild it. And then, do you have anything to update on the health department?
Oh, yes, the, uh, mobile unit will be here.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third of, uh, September, the mobile unit is coming in. And I don't know just exactly where, where he's planning on taking it to, to kind of.
We have to get a letter.
We gotta get a letter, do some things, then he's gonna take it around to some schools. And the, the building, waiting on probably be in October, it's last September after we, we're waiting on something that Senator manages. Whenever, everything the paperwork can do on that will happen.
The, the mobile unit, what exactly is it for?
It's, it's actually a mobile health clinic.
Yeah. It's gonna, what it'll do is start around the counties, it'll help people that can't get out.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be, I don't know just how, what the schedule of it will be yet. They, we haven't sat down and discussed that at the health department meeting, but it's gonna be out there for, for anybody, and it'll probably go to schools. It'll, it'll save a, a lot of the elderly people, uh, that can't, that even anybody that can't drive, don't have transportation, it'll be, bring it to their.
Yeah, the goal is they will be taken at the schools for vaccination. And we're hoping we can use it for different parts of the county for flu shots and for seniors.
The plan.
So it's got like a designated place that will go to, and you go to.
Not yet.
Oh, but that, is that the thing that's gonna go to like a certain place and then you go to it?
Yeah, we have to set that up.
Yeah, we go to like originally in Piedmont and, uh, Garden.
And then those people can just go to that unit.
Instead of driving off the mountain to come to the health department from Richly all the way up here.
And Lord, hoping we'll never have to go again, but.
Yeah, we're hoping it doesn't have to use.
Do you have a timeline of building dedication? Yes.
No. Uh, any other weird updates?
Uh, we've reviewed applications that we got and sent out invitations to those we felt appropriate for, uh, to come in and present to the committee, uh, as to what they're gonna do, and gives us an opportunity to ask them questions and follow through, hopefully. I'm hopefully, that's twenty-third, right? So I'm hoping that the next meeting on the twenty-fourth, next commission meeting, we'll be able to make some recommendations for, uh.
How many patients did you get coming to your house?
I, was it five? Three of them, yeah, something like that. Five and three, or six and four, or something like that.
Yeah, perfect. You, uh, general action two thousand twenty-four, food change and briefing?
And then, um, of course I got all my supplies ordered. I finally just got my proof, um, that I can call my ballot commissioners on Monday. I initially got that on Friday, but when I first saw it, I knew there were adjustments that needed to be made before I could call my ballot commissioner. So I did get that Monday day. Ballots go out on the twentieth, so we're really in a fresh time, so.
You have somewhere about a proof of change in precinct?
Um, I'd give confirmation on that, so I have to carry that.
They got September the twentieth.
Ballots will go out September the twentieth is the day medical ballots, the military ballots, um, meet the required, that's when we start.
Coming soon, isn't it? Yeah.
I don't have pretty yet, so a little stressed.
I don't have any information on the parks and facilities truck.
No, I think we just had that on the agenda to carry over.
Okay, new business, Middle County Development Authority check for interest.
Yeah, we got this check for fourteen thousand dollars and told it was for interest from the development authority for the project, but can you give an explanation?
Well, I didn't think it was interest, I thought it was the taxes for, um, equipment, for equipment that they development authority owns, but they lease it to Northern. development authority owns, but they lease it to Northern government. I didn't think it was interest.
Was this to go into the tax office?
Probably. Should have.
Do they have a tax bill?
No, they don't have a tax bill.
We can't take taxes like that's what I need an an explanation before we can deposit this. And I've gotten, I've sent a message to the development authority to explain it. I didn't I haven't got an email response to that.
Okay. Let me call Kevin.
Yeah, if we can just get an explanation of what it is, so we know where we'll be putting it.
He explained to me that it was uh uh taxes on property that the development authority owned, but they leased it to Northern government. So it shouldn't have went to you. It should have went to tax office, but he should have had a tax bill.
Okay, well, apparently Luke gave it down, brought down, gave it to Kim and told Kim that it was for the interest Northern Brahman A B L for the development project. It was interest.
Then why would that come to you?
That that's why it's on the agenda.
Let me see if I can get a hold of him. Okay, let's get that for a minute. Approved C E O's request to use courthouse for breast cancer awareness day.
So I spoke to them previously about scheduling a date for their um breast cancer awareness ceremony. Last couple of years, they've done it. They've done it actually on uh, was it Columbus State's October eighth? Yeah. So they did it on the holiday, which there was nobody at the courthouse and they had low turnout. So and then we've done it before, tried to get them to do it on commission meeting dates. That dates um did not work for their schedule. So we went ahead and went with October the first because it's for the whole month. So I hope you know are available on that day at noon. Um, and then this is just, of course, whenever they they have to do a use form, so you all have to approve them using front of the courthouse. And also given the permission to put the wreath on the front door, which we've been using command strips. We don't use the metal hooks anymore. We just use a command strip for the the reason.
I'm reading the permission to do it. I have that October one and twelve noon.
I second that.
And authorization for them to act.
Yes, yeah, everything involved in that.
Oh, I guess authorization for the president to sign too.
And authorization for the president.
I think that's it, Roger.
You want this one signed or do you have?
I have the one original.
And it's at noon?
It's at noon.
That'd be on Tuesday, the first.
Okay, we looked at commission meeting dates, we looked at the possibilities, but.
Hey, dear commissioners, this letter is to inform you that Mrs. Megan Parsons has been hired to fill part time position that is available in the assessor's office. Ms. Parsons will be in training as a receptionist and assisting in personal property. Ms. Parsons will be starting middle county office on September the eleventh. Thank you for your approval to be able to hire someone to fill the much needed position. Bill Cottler. Okay, so what man motion before that?
Made a motion, yeah, but then this, she didn't have a name at the time.
Okay, so motion to approve.
I have a question. How come she's not starting at the pay period, beginning of the pay period?
Well, she was going to have her start later, but then there was an issue with she was going to be at training and she wanted to get her started before she left, so she wanted to get her.
So how would that work with pay period?
We just pay hourly for that first pay. Whenever they don't need to pay period, we adjust it and they get paid an hour.
Well, she's a support time anyways, she should have paid her. I second that, actually, also.
We appreciate the fact that you do consider payroll periods it for starting, it makes it easier on payroll.
Well, that's what I've already.
But we we adjusted.
That's why I called you today.
Okay, approve the new hire for the nine one seven. I'm requesting commissioner to hire Teresa Schillingberg, Tessa Schillingberg to fill one of our vacant full time nine one one telecommunicator spots. So I'm. I'll second that.
You guys, I'm gonna be demanding, okay, we hadn't even been at it.
No, not you. No, we do have a custodian, right?
Yeah, we do have a custodian, but I forget the name. And I don't, I've never heard.
Jessica, Jessica David.
That was it.
I'm assuming she accepted it.
Yeah, I hadn't heard if she secured it or not.
I haven't heard either, but that's who we, she's supposed to start the middle of the line. This going with the rest of stuff and I'll give Jenna the text.
Okay.
Would you motion on that?
I'll just wait one second. Make sure. Approval approval annual air conditioning maintenance for the courthouse.
He said a, he mentioned a purchase order. He said, I have a purchase order, it doesn't need to be on the agenda. And I said, no, it really should be on the agenda. So the preventive maintenance that is done every year on the courthouse, all the units, that's an annual, they only charge, I know it sounds a lot, but they only charge three thousand dollars. They're very thorough. They take the units out, they wash them, they put tablets in, um, and that cuts down on future maintenance. It does seem like now we are calling them um because it hasn't been a whole year since they've done it and we are beginning to have, you know, falls um some pump issues because until that maintenance done.
Are they do this once a year or a quarter?
They do all the, all the units in the courthouse. They clean out the lines that the lines get a lot of algae in them because of the distance. Some of those lines run forty, fifty feet, a little more. And they get a lot of algae on the thing. So they go through, they clean up all the lines, they clean up units, they wash them out, clean all the filters. And that's been the same thing they charged. That's true.
It's a year of maintenance for coming for the courthouse. Now I found that new relationship. That maintenance agreement, I second you. Okay, approval resolutions of the middle county commission adopting the region eight planning and development council multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Update, I have this right here. Over here, the resolution of the middle county commission adopting the region eight planning and development council multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan updated two thousand twenty four, where whereas the commission recognizes the threat of natural hazards posed to people and property within middle county. And whereas the county has prepared a multi hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the region eight P D C multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan updated two thousand twenty four, in accordance with federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Act, as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty eight, as amended, the National Dam Safety Program Act, as amended, and whereas the mitigation plan identifies mitigation goal and actions to reduce or eliminate long term risk to people and property in the county from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. Whereas adoption by the commission demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goals outlined in the region eight P D C multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. Now therefore be resolved, middle county commission cause West Virginia formally adopts the region eight plan, then planning and development council multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. While the count content related to the county may require revisions to meet the plan approval requirements, changes occurring after adoption will not require the commission to re-adopt any further uh any further iterations of the plan. Subsequent plan updates following the approval period for this plan will require separate adoption, adoption resolutions. So I've motioned to approve this resolution and have authorized president sign.
I'm assuming, I'll second.
And I approve it also.
Now to get back with the custodial heart, Jenna sent me a message back. She said, as far as she knows, she doesn't care. So I'm really, we said Jessica baby.
Okay. I approve it also. Okay, next meeting we'll be dealing with this check that we received, fire protection fund check for forty five thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars and forty six cents. In the next meeting, we'll be dealing with the new hire for the prosecuting attorney's office, which my understanding is he wants to come October the first.
Give confirmation on that. And then this will give you guys whether obviously on distributing the check because that had been in previous conversation. So I got it too late to put it on the agenda, so I thought I'd give you time to think about it.
All right, we'll probably do it like we did the last time. The state, the state sent us forty five thousand dollars to distribute amongst the fire companies. We have eleven fire companies in the county. So the baby before was how do we divide it? Do you divide it according to call volume? Which means Kaiser would get the biggest share of the money, but Patterson Creek would hardly get any. So talking with the firefighters the last time, firefighters and President Firefighter Association, we divided it up equally. Each fire company got the same money. It, you know, obviously you have more, run more calls, you have more expenses. But to keep everything fair, we decided to distribute it evenly amongst eleven companies. So we'll probably do that this time. I'll be surprised if we do something different. Okay, so we're looking for committee report now. Liz, do you have any questions? Anyone have any question?
What do you go first? August, since the last meeting? Who was last meeting? August twenty seventh. Uh, since the last meeting, went to the open house at uh Randy Antares, Putt Putt Golf. All three of us were there for that. And then I was in Virginia Beach for a week.
You was at the interviews.
Yeah, the interviews today.
No.
Yeah, I left afterwards. Yeah, so yeah, so that was Tuesday. So you're for the custodian interviews. And then I was here for the interviews today for the dog warden assistant or whatever it was, whatever his title was. Her title was, whoever gets it. Anyway, um, that was it.
Yeah, I went to the Asian Family Services meeting. I was at the region eight signing papers. I was also at the Putt Putt Golf Randy's. That's a nice place if you guys like to putt putt. I'm not a golfer. It is a nice court.
Where's the location?
At several beside the old student house around fifty. It's one of the old, he needs to get a big sign up there. If you look back in, you can see the the old house. It's a nice, it's a really a nice place. And then I was at interviews on the third also, I was.
Thank you for all three of you at the custodians.
Yes, yes. All three was at the custodians and all three was at the dog, sister dog warden review. And I was at the interview, I mean, I'm sorry, I was at the Frankfurt Middle School ribbon cutting. That's right. And I've been also, you know, I had to write this down, but dealing with some state road and shit.
Yeah, I wrote a letter for ribbon cutting.
Yeah.
And they read it. They read it. Okay, I was at all those also. Uh, I was at a hospital executive board meetings. In addition to that, uh, I was at the Grand Open, the ribbon cutting at Frankfurt Elementary School. And I think that was it. Probably had another meeting, but I don't know.
I missed a little bit. Actually, I was asking the mission and I had COVID and I didn't know it, so I know which one.
I was in your office. Well, hey, we did the interviews for custodian and one of the people that we interviewed had.
It was me.
Huh?
It was me.
Oh, really?
I sent you an email as soon as I.
We got it. Yeah, we got the email.
I know, and I felt dreadful that I was tied to like Marion.
We got it anonymous. I mean, we didn't, I didn't even know. I don't know. We didn't know who was it and somebody.
If we get it, we will.
Yeah, so I went in your office looking for you and they said she's not sick and I thought sick.
Unfortunately, I gave it to my mother, so she's cleared out. Yeah, but it's very.
You know, it was, there she was pretty bad.
Well, I had it, I wasn't feeling well the week before, so I actually, I've been like three weeks, so I was taking care of her.
I know Shane's mother, she was in the hospital five days with the chief of home check along with oxygen.
One of my employees has in me. He texted me this morning, said he couldn't breathe. So hopefully he'll be.
It's not the best, it's.
My husband needs someone else. Yeah, it's been all for state, my. But yes, I'm kind of behind in everything. Timing really wasn't the greatest. Of course, the the Saturday, the last day, I mean, before I came back, I got a call about the printers, Lauren, we need you to prove your ballots. And I thought, I'll be there tomorrow. You know, whatever, I'll be there. So I got there, my ballots weren't there and I called them at ballots. So, um, but yeah, so we're just, you know, working election. Shell goes up, um, she was up last week. We're finishing up what we need for our fiscal year and we're in pretty good shape for that, so. All in all, pretty good.
Okay, perfect. Any questions from anyone? We are actually, we still have bills and stuff to do. We can't adjourn yet, but really the only thing we're doing is going to go through the bill with supporting many things.
Unless you want to take a few help.
See you gentlemen later.
See you.
Yeah, well, no, we're not done yet. Yeah, we still have a long way to go. Bill, we'll tell them we have this recorded. We have to turn a lot down.
Did they send you or did they send country bills?
Hey, I'll get you the information on that. Is owned by Melinda Hale, John Hill Middle Farm.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I went out, shot a grab and asked Jason, which is the son. He said, he gave me permission to put it up there.
Okay.
Yeah, Jason, he's in the, he's not in the big building, he's in the little nice front office.
Yeah, with the.
Just go in there and tell him that, as usual, Linda's on.
Yeah.
Thanks. So then the one down there belongs to the uh.
The, yeah, the Ager.
Yeah.
Good good place.
Yeah, they don't care. No, just go ahead and put it out. I wouldn't even ask them. I don't, I think I care.
Okay.
Because everybody does. I mean.
Prefer to give permission then.
I mean, you can if you want, but they won't say anything if you put a sign up there.
Okay.
I see your signs about it everywhere.
See anything. Been working at it.
Did I answer all the questions you asked me?
Yep.
It usually gets to get permission.
It usually, yeah, I never put one up unless I had.
Yeah. And that I did, I had permission before, but I just didn't want to assume.
Hey, there's another good place to put one. If you're coming into short gap, before you get in, before you get through the mountain, there's a town sign up on the right. It's like tells about the churches and and.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
No, it's a good place to put one.
Now, when I ran the first time, I went right down where the light is in short gap. Yeah, twenty eighth and nine fifty six. Yeah, put one right against that back. I wanted to talk to the gentleman and he would.
Yeah, they let me put something there.
I put a big one up there.
I didn't put a big one. I put some small ones. The twelve thousand actually.
Yeah, they're nice. They're seem to be, they're very nice people. They they were.
And Jared, before we cut off.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, he never called me back yet. Can I call you in the morning? I gotta call you in the morning, cause I'm sure you'll get in touch with me, it's just that I don't, I'm not, he's great working right now on the mount.
Where's he work?
He's building the house for his mom.
Oh, I bet that's where he lives, yeah. Let me see them, y'all, two email fast.
We want the check, we just don't know where to put it.
Well, I mean, it was, yeah.
No.
Jerry, this just needs your signature, that's for the user of the breast cancer wearers.
Okay.
They're just doing change. They're just doing change, uh.
Really? How many years? That's been two years, hasn't it? Been more than two years.
Yeah.
Oh, she did long time.
A bunch of builders.
It was Seattle, the other thing that, so she didn't like pay the street market. But yeah, could have been a grand show.
Long goodbye, always.
Yeah, yeah. Hope you haven't seen it, Billy, it's gonna be on my computer, wow, I don't have TV.
Well, it was probably a smart move, I hope. I hope he takes it, you know, I can remember a great hat handed to her, cause she's trying to get all these ideas, so you're. That's what I'd do if I was a kid. I, I just can't get over this.
Well, I was never home to watch TV, and I was paying that for nothing. And I thought, and I thought, you know, heck of this, there wasn't anything good on there anyhow.
There's nothing on it, it's, it's terrible.
So I haven't had TV for.
Get up at five o'clock in the morning and look at it, cause that.
Watch Phoebe.
TV then?
Yeah, Gunsmove.
Oh, I love Gunsmove, yeah, yeah. I did like Gunsmove.
And Andy Griffin, I watched a little bit of Andy.
Yeah.
I always liked Gunsmove.
Used to watch a little bit of, uh. Will Sorgo.
Yeah.
But there's nothing to watch. I never seen anything, I never seen something go downhill in all my life.
I did like to watch the news, but the press.
But you know, I called him here a few years ago and I told him, I said, ma'am, I said, I know it's not your fault. I said, I know you just walked on, you know, but I said, television stays, there's nothing more. I said, you're either gonna have to do something with my bill or unhook it. She loved when you watch. I mean, I know it's not the lady, I didn't, it's, it's terrible.
Kevin Clark. Hey, Kevin. Hey, we're here at the commission meeting and we're talking about your check, I'm gonna put you on speaker, the commissioners are here and Lauren. Need you to explain what it is, we're not sure where to put the money, I wanted to take it home, but they didn't think it was a good idea. Hope, I'm putting you on speaker. Okay, go ahead, you're on speaker.
Oh, it's for, uh, a project grant that was, uh, probably early. What, twenty nineteen, I think.
But is it interest or is it taxes?
They can't find more equipment than was planned on, uh, probably due to inflation. Uh, but since it was more than was agreed upon, they're making larger payments than was agreed upon, so that's when we came to you. Uh, to, to be able to some of those payments, you have the school system, so it doesn't matter to me, you know. Where you put it, I'm not sure what the rules went through the counties to them, but it's just general revenue from development authority, we're just giving it to you all.
Okay, it's not taxes then? Okay, it's just general revenue coming from the commission, coming from the development.
The bottom line of the difference, please make sure it's with it that we have.
Right, that's what I explained. So, okay, that, is that cleared up?
No.
It's just gonna be general revenue from the development authority.
Why aren't, why isn't the development authority keeping it, like?
Because we made an agreement that we wouldn't charge them, uh, the commission wouldn't charge them for something, for taxes or something coming over, right?
Yeah, we, we would own the property, so they wouldn't pay taxes, but they bought more property than was originally agreed upon. So they're paying, that's a, a larger lease payment, and now we're giving to the county and school.
Yeah, the county commission bought, the county commission, the, the development authority bought the property, leasing it to. To ABL, North of Grumman. It turns out it's more money than we figured, so he's getting rid of it. So part of it goes to us and part of it goes to the schools.
I mean, I'd be happy to keep it.
No, we're just trying to figure out where to put it. We're just trying to figure out where to put it. You have to go nine five seven eight. Or First United, one, two.
Yeah, if, um, if someone wants to contact me tomorrow, um, probably tomorrow, I could ask our attorney. Would they, you know, would they have any further insight? I mean, honestly, like for us, it's general revenue, I don't know if there's some, you know, rule or county knowledge that I don't know about for your account law.
Man, now we're acting, put the money, it's actually just the miscellaneous revenue in our general accounting fund, but I need to know exactly. You know. Why it is our money? So. That was the question, is, is it our money, why?
Yeah, it's our money, we just gotta figure out where to put it.
You made an agreement with the development authority.
Right.
Not tax on the property.
Well, actually, the property was bought by the development authority, so there wouldn't be any taxes. You know what I mean? That helps you.
Payment in lieu of taxes?
There you go. Payment in lieu of taxes, how's that sound?
Yeah, it's technically not bad, but.
I know, it's not, it's actually not taxes, it's actually, if you, if you put it in as a tax.
No, no, it's not, it's put in.
The school gets that share in there.
No, the school already gets a share.
Gets a share other than this.
Yeah, they don't get it, this, they get their own.
Right, that's what I'm, you gotta be careful with that.
Okay, we'll figure it out, Kevin.
All right, all right, something's looking there, I can ask our attorney to tick off too.
All right.
Maybe a more specific question, um, so they'll charge me to answer every question.
Okay, all right, thanks, bye.
All right, thank you.
Got clear anything else? Not really, no. There's much.
I think what he needs is another bank account.
He, that's an idea. Nine five seven eight. That's what I each gave him one.
You still record, we're recording, are you?
I don't know, yeah, loops on there, right? Are you, ain't money in it anyways, so.
No, that's the.
That's that computer.
Yes, now here's one.
He usually changes that to county commission, I didn't change it. I was, yeah, it's still work around.
Why, why, why are they?
Had to use.
That's my.
I know, I know where.
I mean, it's only sixteen dollars, but still.
That was anyway, I think I would reach that up. Think he has a special map, mat or something down there, mouse pad down there that he uses. Twenty have to use a mouse pad.
I have one, cause I have kind of an issue in the public terminal. Those make it really go well with us, you know, table back here, so I bought mouse pads, no, you're gonna use a beer? So I bought more and I, and they were blue and I wrote with a sharpie, cause they're like, do not remove from.
Well, it's time to go to one of these conferences and they have mouse pads, they're giving out, I was grabbing.
That's where I ended up getting this from, so I was like, my mouse pad, somebody does the ball. Who does that?
You guys want to, uh. Unfortunately, that's.
Yeah, did you go to that miniature ball? I was really excited about that, I've been waiting.
It's, that's open, but it's Wednesday, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
It's a nice place.
It is, we is, it is.
I drew a lot of dance stairs and not a lot of Persia here.
Uh, you guys going up to?
I am.
Trytown?
Yeah.
No, is that the one over in borough?
No, that's one in Westernport.
You sure?
Oh, that's, it's at Bloomington, they're having, it's.
I thought it was.
Trytown doesn't want to feed mine, but they're gonna have the banquet in Bloomington. Oh, so it's in Bloomington?
That was the little party that last time.
We never read that. Okay, so it's at Bloomington. Really? Boy, good thing you told me, I was, it went to Westernport.
I, I have Bloomington. Bloomington Fire Hall. That starts at five.
Right, and I was gonna go, I was gonna go over to the fairgrounds. For Jeremy's fundraiser, it starts at eleven, I was gonna go to that too. Bloom. Bloomington Fire Company.
Yes, we was there once before.
We were a long time ago. And, it's sensitive, dude. I was on there. There you go. I might still slip over the fire, or else, fairgrounds, maybe.
I probably will, probably go over a little bit and then go up to.
Yeah, go up to that. I make a motion, we approve these honorations.
I second it.
How about the bills? I make them, uh. Maybe he's not in love with all of them. I make a motion, we approve the estates.
I second it.
And I'll make a motion, we approve the accounts paper.
I'll second.
And per source.
And per facility.
No, I'm second.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Perfect, second it.
There you are, sorry.
Stop recording.
Stop recording, stop recording.
All right, so Stacy, hey, guys, that's what the ground post is.
Seven hundred dollars?
And those things, I don't have anything like my brands.
Yeah, but.